Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, February 27, 2025. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right. Now taking roll call of our board, our Planning Commission members, the Chair, Jason Wienerman is absent. I as Vice Chair, I'm taking his place. I'm a member of District Five. David Bentrudd.
Here, District Two.
Jason?
District Three, here.
Our new member, Dave Canofla.
Here, District Four.
Perfect. At Large, Rich Blankish.
Here.
Tara, at Large, as well?
Present.
And our Ex-Official Commissioner, Joel Persky.
Here.
All right, perfect.
Here.
And, good job. He had his microphone on, I'm proud of him. All right, and now we need to move to the Oath of Office for our new member, Dave Canofla. So if you would do that for us, that would be appreciated.
I, David Canofla, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of the Planning Commission in the County of Stearns, Minnesota, according to the law and to the best of my ability and understanding. I recited this oath as part of the proceedings of the Stearns County Planning Commission meeting on the 27th of February, 2025.
Very good, and welcome to the Planning Commission. I dare say, environmental service is probably not a big stranger to you, right?
No.
How many years were you with the?
Thirty.
Just a few. All right, so moving on to our item agendas, our item number one has been withdrawn, but for the sake of the testimony and minutes, we will need to go through. So I'll kind of go through what the variance request is. To consider a request to amend a conditional use permit, 1979-002, submitted by North Hagg Family Partnership in Eden Valley, Minnesota, to sections 4.8 and 10.2 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439. And the request is to remove conditions three and five related to allowing campers to be parked onsite year-round and the fencing. The property is part of Government Lot One, lying west of County Road Nine and south of 162nd Street in Section 24 of Eden Lake Township. So for that sake, I think I need to have a, do I need to have a form motion? Yes, can I have a motion to accept that withdrawal?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Rich, can I get a second? Second from Jason. All those in favor of tabling and withdrawing this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. So moving to Agenda Item Number Two, Brandon Rednicki, please come forward. To consider a rezoning request submitted by Brandon Rednicki of Holdingford, Minnesota, according to Section 4.10 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439, to rezone approximately 20.28 acres of the Transitional T20 zoning district to the A40 zoning district. And so that is part of the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter, lying east of 125th Avenue in Section Five in Brockway Township. And the address of that property is 43436 125th Avenue in Holdingford, Minnesota. And if I can get Brandon your name and address just for the public record, real quick.
Yep, Brandon Rednicki, address 43436 125th Avenue, Holdingford.
Perfect, thank you very much. And staff, to your report.
Okay, so a request to rezone 20 acres from T20 to A40, and the purpose is to allow for an increase in the number of animal units that he has on his farm. This was originally on the January Planning Commission agenda, and at the applicant's request, it was postponed until this meeting. So it's in Brockway Township, access is existing and from 125th Avenue. Property consists of the existing farm site, farmland, and some woods and wetland areas. There's no setback impacts with this request. There are approximately 41 homes, eight feedlots with greater than 10 animal units, and the townsite of Opole within a half mile of the property. It's got a mix of rural residential lots, farm sites, and farmlands surrounding the property, and also a mix of zoning, agriculture 40, transitional 20, residential 5, and rural townsite all surround this property. There will be no change in the number of residential building entitlements allowed with this rezoning, so it's just the existing home that's allowed with either zoning district. This is within the Ag Rural area, area on the future land use map in the county's comprehensive plan, and also partly within the concentrated development area. So it kind of splits the property east and west side there. Brockway Township did review this and recommended approval of the request. And that's all that I have.
Very good. So Brandon, is there anyone, area, anything you wish to add to the record about this? Anything you want to say, or?
Not really, no.
Okay. Commission members, any questions for staff or the applicant? Anybody else? I will do a roll call also of members who hopefully have been able to attend this, or to visit the site. Jason's absent. David Bentrudd?
I did not.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave Canofla?
No.
I was able to visit. Rich?
Last month.
Tara?
Yes.
And Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
Okay, there's that for the record. So hearing no questions, or do you have one, Tara?
I just have one question.
Yes.
It says it's for a livestock increase for animal units. I didn't see anything on here saying what, how many animal units or anything.
Right now, I'm allowed 20. I'd like to increase to about 40 to 60.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? So with that is, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
We gotta.
Oh, yep, yep. Anyone wishing to step forward for a public testimony? Nobody seems, anybody wishing to step up for a public testimony? Got to ask it one time, it sounds stupid, but it's the rules.
There we go.
That is the rules. Anyone wishing to come up for a public testimony? Therefore, nobody, nobody seeming to be dying to come up for testimony this evening. Can I then get a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion from Jason?
I'll second.
I got two seconds, is that popular? All right. Second from both Dave and Tara. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. So then we will be moving now to our finding of facts. Is the proposal consistent with a zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I would say that it is consistent. Actually, the transition zoning is something that the county's gone away from, and so this is a step towards what is currently allowed with zoning options.
All right, very good. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county?
Mr. Chair, I would say that it does. Under agricultural goals, specifically item number one, support agriculture as a desirable land use for the long term, and facilitate diversification. Item four, strive for and support higher farm profitability and family farm stability. And there's also, consistent with our agricultural use policies, specifically number two, emphasize the importance of animal agriculture to the county's economy by treating it as a priority.
Perfect, thank you very much. Number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood?
Mr. Chair, I believe it is. There's a lot of agricultural zoning in that area, and this is being done just to add some animal units to the property.
Very good. Number four, how has the applicant demonstrated that the standards and criteria stating in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, they've gone through the process of working with the township and are basically following all the rules of rezoning.
Very good. And are there other issues pertinent to this matter?
Township recommended approval?
And I think that would be all, I believe, for that. So looking since all of these met approval, looking for a motion and a second to approve this variance request.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion, we recommend approval for the rezoning.
Okay, we've got a, Mr. Chair, a little second then. Second from Rich. All right, I will do the remaining roll call for this. Dave Bentrudd? Do you have any to do a motion? Okay. All those in favor of the variance being, request being granted, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries, and your variance has been granted. Any other questions? Feel free, please, to talk to staff.
It'll go to the county.
Uh, county, yep.
Just the recommended approval for the county board on March 11th.
All right, moving now to Agenda Item Three. To consider a request for a conditional use permit submitted by Shady's Property Investment of Pelican Lake LLC, Albany, Minnesota, according to Sections 4.8, 9.9, and 10.24A of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439, to expand the use including an outdoor band shelter and outdoor events in an R1 zoning district. Their property under construction is located at the southeast, southeast quarter, the southeast quarter, lying southeast of County Road 154 in Section Six of Avon Township. And the property address is 18527 County Road 154 in Avon, Minnesota. And if I can get the applicant's name and address for the public record, please.
Chris Schiffler, 103 Power Drive, Albany, Minnesota.
All right, thank you very much. And staff, to your report, please.
Okay, so this is a continuation from our January meeting. So just a couple highlights that were added. The purpose it was, continued was to look more at the noise standard and the Township Noise Ordinance. So I added, the Township recommendation that was stated at the meeting last month was added. Their recommendation was to deny the permit, or if approved, they had five conditions that they were asking for, which was a minimum of 30 days between outdoor music events, outdoor music not allowed past 10:00 PM, compliance with the Township Noise Ordinance, obtain a noise ordinance, or a noise exemption permit from the Township for every event, and the purchase of noise monitoring equipment to measure noise levels in real time in accordance with state, county, and Township noise standards. Proposed conditions, if the Planning Commission does recommend approval of this, number one, specify the number of days that outdoor music is allowed. The applicant is requesting 10 to 15 events per year. Township recommended no more than one per 30 days. Consider setting hours allowed for outdoor music events. Township is recommending no outdoor music after 10:00 PM. Condition three, outdoor music is only allowed on the property provided the noise levels comply with Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7030, MPCA State Noise Standard. Noise levels exceeding Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7030, are considered a violation of Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7030, County Ordinance, and the CUP. Four, compliance with an ordinance regulating noise licensed establishments in Avon Township is required. Number five, when outdoor music is occurring on the property, the permit shall guarantee the state noise standard in Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7030, is met at the property line. To ensure this is met, the following are required. A, storm water, or storm, sound level monitoring must be performed when there is outdoor music according to the measurement procedures in the Guide to Noise Control in Minnesota. B, the sound level meter and microphone shall meet Section Three of the Guide. C, the testing procedure shall meet Section Three of the Guide. D, sound level reports for the applicable noise area classification as found in Minnesota Rule 7030 shall be generated in real time as described by the MPCA. Reports shall be kept for a minimum of one year. All generated sound reports shall be provided to the county and township upon request. And condition six, based on the number of parking spaces, a maximum of 393 seats are allowed at any one time, including both indoor and outdoor seats, unless or until additional parking is approved by the department. And that's all I have at this time.
Okay. And before we hear testimony, just a roll call of who is able to visit. Dave Bentrudd?
I visited last month, I didn't go out again.
Okay. Jason?
Likewise.
Dave Canofla?
No.
I was, visited last month. Rich?
Last month also.
Tara?
Been there before.
And Commissioner Persky?
I was there earlier too, but I don't believe it had changed.
Okay. I would doubt it, very much. All right, there's that for the record. And Chris, anything you want to say to the Planning Commission?
I guess I would like to start out by, I was at the Planning Commission before. I was here for our Cold Spring location. We had the, a similar situation happen with, with that location, right during COVID, let's say. We came here for the same deal, we had to fix a couple, get a couple CUPs and purview space, and another thing was the noise, and going and buying our own equipment and reading the decibels, and, and those were all options back then, too. And we have had zero complaints after COVID. We changed everything. Out there, we have 12 events, we ask for 12 events a year. They're one or two man bands, none of them go past 10 o'clock out there. On this one, we're asking only for one event, and hopefully the July 4th weekend, we'd like to have a band, actually, like with the drums and a, more than just a couple people singing with a guitar, but that's really the only thing. I mean, I thought our, I think our tracker shows that we're trying to do everything possible. We did it in Cold Spring, and we're doing the same thing here again, getting all the permits and everything we need, just hoping that we're able to still continue to do something outside, so.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from committee members for staff or the applicant?
Oh, yes.
Go ahead.
So what would you propose to do for parking, overflow parking, that ends up in the public access? Not on your property?
I, I don't know, I guess, what could I do? It's not, it's not illegal for them to park there. I can't go over there and say, you can't park at the public access. It's not my property to do that with.
But it is kind of your responsibility to make sure that your customers don't encroach on the public access for parking.
Okay. I, I would do whatever, whatever you'd like me to do, I'd be more than happy, but I have no idea how to fix that problem. I'd be more than happy for them to park in my parking lot because they're closer to the door. So I, I don't know how to fix that, but I, I would be definitely open to suggestions on it.
Question, Mr. Chair. How many, how many designated spots are there for your, your parking lot versus what the public access is supposed to have? Does the public access actually have designated parking spots? It's just the access, just the dock?
That, I'm not, I'm not familiar with how that, if that's just a gravel access out there.
Yeah, yeah, it's just all big, one big gravel parking lot, but I'm just wondering, does the DNR, who maintains and owns the public access, as in like, the easement to get onto that, have any parking spaces designated for that also? Or is this all privately owned parking lot, whereas this isn't, is it an issue that he can control at all, or should, if the DNR doesn't have their own parking spaces identified?
In the winter, we take care of all the snow, we plow all the snow, and in the summer, we, when we grade the gravel, we grade the, the, the access as well. It's a benefit for us to have the access there as a, as a bar and restaurant, so we want it to be nice and be good, so.
Because I'm just feeling like it'd be hard for us to say, you have to maintain 30 parking spaces for the public on your parking lot that you own, and the DNR doesn't.
Right, right.
Mr. Chair, would it make sense to contact the DNR, and they put the signage where that landing is, in regards to no parking? That, they, just one sign?
Just one, it's right next to, that's right next to the ballroom. On the ballroom side, they have one side.
Okay. But is there, is there actually a public?
I don't.
Road access from the lake going out to, what is it, 154?
Yeah, it's, it just looks like the, the driveway is between us and the ballroom, so.
Okay. In fairness, I appreciate the spirit of the question, as someone who uses public access is a lot, fishing. But at the end of the day, I don't know that it pertains to this. It's a, it's a public access. Regardless of the reason anyone wants to park there, they should be able to park there, whether it's to attend a music event or land their boat. That's kind of the purpose of a public access, so.
Well, and that's where I'm asking, what, unless there's an easement from the DNR that overlaps this property, I don't know that we have any jurisdiction or even any business saying that you are restricted to how you operate your own parking lot. I appreciate the DNR submitted that comment, but they've submitted lots of comments like that to me before, so.
Any other questions or comments, concerns?
Mr. Chair, I, I guess, I just, my opinion would be, I guess, the, the DNR access is for what purpose? I guess the purpose would be to access the lake, correct? And so, that's parking space should be obligated for those people that want to access the lake. Now, most situations, probably, it's not concerning, but if, if Chris does have an event and they occupy all the spaces for his concert or activity that he's doing at his business, now we're denying people access to that lake.
Well, you're not denying them access to the lake, they can still use the access, they might just have to park somewhere else, it's not a public parking lot.
At many places, there's no, there's restricted parking as far as boat trailers on the road. I don't know if that's true or not.
Chair, I'm just saying, you guys, this is a slippery slope to go down. If we're going to go down in deciding who's parking in public access, as I can cite, public accesses where people on the lakes go purposely park their vehicles in the access, I mean.
Right, exactly.
It's, it is a, I'd say we stay away from this one, to be honest with you, and stick with this, this topic.
Any other questions, comments?
A comment, I live within earshot of the Shady's location in Cold Spring, so I'm familiar with the before and after, and it's, it's gone really well. Neighbors are happy. I actually didn't even realize you've had a lot of the musical events that you have, because I can't hear them at all anymore, so. Just as a testimony of someone who lives right next to the other one, what they've done in Cold Spring has gone, gone quite well.
Very good. Yes.
Chair, so Chris, what do you think, how come it, it's been so successful out there in Cold Spring that you haven't had any complaints?
Though, I can start with how it was, why it was unsuccessful from the beginning. Unsuccessful was because of COVID, and there were just so many people. I mean, we did, we had a record, record attendance of people at everything, when that was outside, there was so many people, because you wanted to do something. What happened was, it just became less and less people. A lot of what actually solved their problem wasn't, it was, we had too many, we couldn't even handle how many there were, so. We don't do, we, it's hard for me to say a band, because a band to me is something that has drums, a guitarist, a singer, everything, where I'm not, I'm not, I don't want that. I can't, we can't afford that in the bar business, to have those bands. They're, you don't make any money on that. We're looking at one or two man guys singing with a, with a speaker that's about this big, and that's, those are what the bands that we're talking about now, so we don't have any of the big bang-bang stuff.
Yeah, no, and, and I think that there's a good point to be made there, because you're probably not pushing out the music that exceeds or runs really close to those limits. those limits that rattle the window panes of the neighboring properties.
Correct. And when we were in Cold Spring, the option came, or the idea came for us to buy the sound monitoring system again and it was about forty-five hundred dollars and at that point we were willing to do that. And not because it was favorable for us, but it was the only way for us to, to be allowed to do that. We were happy to do it at that point. The county actually bought one. Um, and then they, we had a few complaints and they came out and did three readings in a row and all three readings were perfect. You know, we were under, there was no problem, but, and then the complaints just stopped after that.
So you, and so when you think you're monitoring within those limits, it seems not to be an issue with the neighbors?
Correct. Correct. We're, and, and again, we're not, we don't want anything past, we're not going, literally it's gonna be dark and we're, anything's gonna be done out there after dark, so.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're not trying to do big special events. We're looking to get, attract maybe thirty to forty-five people to these things and that's a nice little day on the patio of listening to a guy sing some nice music, so, yeah.
Because I can reference another venue in the county where we have repeated concerns coming from the neighbors and they can't sit in their living room.
Yep.
And watch TV because they're hearing the music from that venue.
We're, we're focused on a lot smaller stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Very, very small, yeah. Our ba, our, our bands that we hire are about three to four hundred dollars, so it's a couple, you know, you're not, you're not getting much for that anymore, we know that, so. They're, but they're good, they're good.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you, but you, uh, uh, do plan to have some after ten o'clock? I'm assuming those are?
I would, I'm, I would ask for one.
I'm assuming that would be full band, drums?
It would be, it would be a band that would be done at probably eleven o'clock, yeah.
Okay. And how many of those are you looking for?
One.
Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Chris, we have a little trouble with the word probably. In other words, to write that into a CUP.
One.
We, we, one and probably eleven o'clock is, is a difficult.
It, it, that's open, that, that, that's an open topic. A lot of the county is midnight, so a lot of the stuff that we do in like Albany or in the town, or in the, in the towns are, you know, they have a midnight and I, I think eleven o'clock is just fine on the outside stuff and although it's changed a lot over the years, we don't have a lot of the late night business, so you, you start early, but the ban, the bands that we're looking to have are gonna be from three in the afternoon till seven at night. So that's what we're, that's the, eleven of them are gonna be and then one that we'd like to have with a full band out there. That would go a little bit later, so till eleven or twelve, whatever the, the county would be okay with, so.
All right.
Chair, one more question. Um, what do you feel about, uh, the recommendation, um, for recommended action of township recommending no more than one of these events per thirty days?
I only have three months to, to do it, so it makes it impossible, yeah. And nobody's gonna come to a band in the winter, not outside, so. Is, I guess, maybe I'm, I wanna maybe clarify for myself and maybe I'm confused a little bit too. Uh, do I, to have the van as long as I'm staying in the noise limit and doing everything, that's, I don't need a permit or a conditional use or anything for that, do I? Or would I have to?
Mr. Chair, um, yeah, to have outdoor music requires the conditional use permit and the condition is that the state noise standard is met. Um, the township is more restrictive with their noise ordinance, um, which is why we added the condition that the, they also have to apply with the township noise standard. So if they're gonna waive anything, um, that, or allow certain events, that would be up to the township as they're more restrictive.
Anything? Yes.
Just again, being those residents, is it possible, Chris, what you're doing in Cold Spring actually meets the requirement from the, from the township? Do you know as far as those levels? Are your, your levels are, are probably?
Yeah, yeah, cause they do it, they do it at your property line.
Right.
Yep, so they do, they, when they did it, they would, they would register off three different, three different points of the property line, so they'd go to the water side and then they'd go to the, you know, both the other sides is how they would do it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but, but the limits that you have at Cold Spring, are, are those limits within the limits of, that the township is requesting?
Yeah.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, so then that would be less than what the state standard would be, correct?
Yeah, as far as the noise goes?
Okay.
Yes. And a, again, like the buying the, the fancy decibel thing for four thousand dollars, again, you can get them on your phone that they're not as accurate as that, but that's what we used out there and then when the county came out, we did the exact, they sat there and then we stood there just to see and they were pretty close, so it gives you a good idea without having to, to, uh, try to figure out how to work one of those things too.
Very good. If there's no more questions, comments? Yep, go ahead.
I just have one more question, uh, and it's more for staff with those sound monitoring systems, cause I'm just really not familiar. It would, in this case, the, the ban shell that they have is pretty close to the lake and I know a lot of the applicants that had sent in messages had talked about it, you know, sound traveling across the lake, which it does. Do those sound monitoring devices do anything when your, your co-sticks are next to a large body of water? Is that?
I'm not real familiar with how they all work exactly. Shelley has any thoughts?
Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. The measurement is taken at the property line, so what happens across the body of water isn't what we would measure. It'd be measured at that property line, so that's, and, um, from years of experience on the Benton County side when things were, or Sterns County side, when the Benton County side was doing something, yeah, it does travel and lots of people hear it, uh, up and down a body of water, so.
All right, um, there's no more comments or questions? Yep, yep, I'm getting there. Shelley, no, I'm just kidding. Um, if there's no more questions, uh, or comments from, yeah, Rich, go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I was gonna make the motion to open up the public hearing.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I would like to open up the public hearing.
If I can get a second for that, please?
To, oh, to open it?
Yep.
All second, yeah.
Uh, motion from Rich, second from Jason. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, so now we're moving, opening the public, uh, hearing, so those with comments, uh, please come forward to the podium here with public testimony. So at the last meeting, we heard a lot of testimony and, um, in the interest of, of just moving along forward this, if you can keep your testimony to about two minutes or thereabouts, that would be fantastic. I appreciate that. Continue. And please state your name and address for the public record if you could.
Hi, my name is John Tillman. I live in Avon, Minnesota. Uh, I would like to, uh, give you guys some handouts to refute some of the comments that the applicant has made. Directly refute the comments that the applicant has made. I don't want to stop Mr. Schiffler from doing anything. I just want him to follow the rules. On August ninth at eight forty-four, I called the sheriff's department and I said, hey, they're not complying with the town ordinance and I asked them to go request that they turn the noise down. That ban started at eight o'clock and it went till midnight. Sheriff went, I think, uh, it was around nine o'clock that the sheriff showed up. I informed him about town ordinance and then the management at the time said, hey, we didn't know about town ordinance and the sheriff didn't stop it. Uh, my concern is, is that if the management has already gone through the conditional use permit at another bar, they still willfully violated the Minnesota state statute. And then they violated the town ordinance and the Minnesota state statute two weeks later and another week after that. So as much as I want to believe Mr. Schiffler and say that they're going to follow all the rules and do everything correctly, history shows that that is not true. In this room, last week, Mr. Mergan, sorry, last month, Mr. Mergan, in his public testimony, said that they were gonna have one to two man bands. And you have proof in your hands right now that that was a lie. A outright lie. He also testified to the overflow parking and how the neighbors were okay with them parking on their lot. I talked to the Schmidas, that was also a lie. They've never had that conversation, in fact, they've had conflict on that particular topic. The Minnesota Noise Pollution Control Agency, uh, has some pretty strict rules about noise. Whether you give them permit and the township says, hey, you can make this noise, there's nothing that a local entity can do to make it so that they can violate the state regulation. So at sixty to sixty-five decibels, uh, which is the daytime limit from seven AM to ten PM, they would be under the restriction of projecting sixty, uh, decibels for thirty minutes or sixty-five decibels for six minutes, which is a normal speech at one meter or a vacuum cleaner at three meters. So if you have a ban like, uh, they did the first three times, that is impossible if it's an outside entity. It's impossible. I called in good faith and I just asked them to turn it down. They weren't willing to play ball at all. They didn't attempt to turn it down. The music stayed the same level until midnight. The next two events, they did change their timeframes, they went from six to ten, but the volume was still well above the state regulations. Uh, there was no monitoring and they know they have to monitor and they know there's restrictions on it and they chose not to. So in my opinion, it's not a... You shouldn't ask for forgiveness. You should follow the rules, especially if you know them. So if we sit here and we say, hey, yeah, you can do this over and over and over again, my recommendation is that they are required to do one hundred percent monitoring and have it be available. And we need to define the NAC level of their establishment, which is NAC level one because they are surrounded by residential environments with overnight lodging or homes. I, I want them to have music. I just want them to follow the rules. They do awesome things for the county and the township. They host charity events, they allow stuff for gymnastics. I, I'm not trying to say never, no, not at all. I just want them to prove and to have restrictions on them that they're going to follow the rules. And I read the cup for Shady's Long Shots and self-monitoring in the way that they're doing right now, the only way that, that, that they get reported at that point is if I have to call and make complaints. That shouldn't be on me or any of my neighbors. That should be on the entity who is, who is trying to host the event. And that's what it's defined as in here. It's not the responsibility of me, their neighbor, it's the responsibility of the individual hosting the event to maintain the noise. It's not the responsibility of township, it's not the responsibility of the county or the state. So if that means that they have to monitor with forty-five hundred dollar equipment to, to fulfill the cup and to, to get faith and trust back with their, their residential community, I recommend that. And again, I don't say, hey, nothing. I want them to have music. I just want them to respect their neighbors and follow the rules. Thank you for your time.
Very much. Anyone else for public testimony? Anyone else wishing to speak to the matter?
Hi.
If you could please state your...
My name is Ron Schminder. I own the Pelican Lake Ballroom next to the public access. I have big problems with, uh, parking and if I'm having an event outside, say a wedding and there's music playing, uh, it kinda gives me a big problem there with, with the wedding people. You know, sometimes they like to have a wedding by the lake, but another thing I have is, is the big problem is, is the parking. The public access is half tarred and half gravel. Now whoever was on this business before, they tarred half of it, now they consider that part of their parking lot. So that's a big problem. And if that gets too many people over there and they're too lazy to park way on the other side of the building, they park in my parking lot. I've had as many as forty cars in there. And then what am I supposed to do when I have a wedding and nobody tells me they shouldn't, I shouldn't be using my own parking lot? That's ridiculous. And I've had it happen many times, not just once, twice, it's many times. And that's really all I have to say about that.
Thank you very much.
Sir, can I ask you, uh, uh, how many weddings do you do a year out there?
Depends, twenty-six, thirty?
Mostly weekends, Friday, Saturday?
Yeah, it's Friday and Saturday and anniversaries on Sundays sometimes.
Thank you. Um, anyone else wishing to speak to the matter at hand? Anybody else wishing to speak to the matter at hand? Okay.
I'm Lee Ray Gondrean from Avon Township. Um, I, I think you have a list of the, the conditions that the township, uh, would like you to follow if you approve this. Talked about it again after your hearing and the township is still opposed to having anything out there because of a lot of the issues and I, I know you've got a bunch of letters from folks as well. We just, it, it's gonna be a problem for us, no matter what happens out there. And, uh, you know, whether you approve it and, and they have to come to the township to get the noise exemption permits, you know, it's just still gonna be issues with enforcement and, and all those things, so. The township would recommend denial.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Lee Ray, I got a question for you. Back to the noise level, the state statute is at sixty-five decibels? Okay. Then does the township have one that's less than that?
The, the township ordinance, the township ordinance basically does not allow outdoor music at all. So he would have to get an exemption from the, the noise ordinance for the township. And if he gets that exemption, then he would have to follow the state rules, I would assume. But without the township exemption permit? He'd be in violation of, of any music he'd have outside. The way we, the way we wrote it and the way we understand it, our, our ordinance, yeah.
And when you administer these exemptions, was it the understanding that you were going to at least be able then to somehow have control over the, the good behavior and the lesser? Those that choose not to follow the rules? So in other words, if a person has an event and there's no issues, then they come in for another permit, you'd probably give them another permit. Whereas if, if, if there continues to be issues, then you would not issue the permit?
That would be how it would happen. I mean, actually, once we, when we approved this ordinance fifteen years, it was fifteen years ago, um, the, the bar up at St. Anna kinda closed up, sold out and they didn't have anymore, so we never really had to deal with, with any exemptions or anything. But that would be the intent. I mean, the intent would be Sterns County would have to enforce, you know, our ordinance. So at this point, if, if they wouldn't get the exemption from the township, um, they would be in violation and, and Sterns County would be called and they would have to, um, check for an exemption permit from them and if they don't have it, they'd have to shut them down. I mean, we hope that's how it would work.
Lee Roy, question for you on, what do you, how does that noise ordinance at the township level apply to an average citizen that, that might hire a band? Let's say you're on the other side of Pelican Lake, someone's having a grad party or something, they rent a band for it. How does, how does that ordinance apply to those folks?
Um, we, we designed the ordinance to only, uh, deal with licensed restaurants and, and bars, established, licensed establishments. So, uh, a graduation party, uh, things like that, we don't, uh, control that. Or we, it wouldn't be in violation of this, our ordinance.
Okay.
Because they're the kinda one-time things and, and usually they don't get out of hand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. Craig Blonigan. I live on Pelican Lake on the channel, so there's a lot of trees between my property and the applicant's property. When they had their concert in August that ran till midnight or thereabouts, my wife was furious because she couldn't sleep. We're older, wanna go to bed by ten, ten-thirty. Uh, we ended up, it was a... We ended up, it was a wonderful evening, we ended up having to close the house up and turn the air on so she couldn't, she tried to sleep and not hear the noise. So, the sound level certainly was higher than anything that anybody anticipated or was agreeable to. Now, on the subject of parking, when they had one of their Sunday afternoon events, the parking was so overflowed down at the landing, my neighbor went to go, had some people out, they were going to land a boat, they couldn't get to the access. It's simply, there was one small, maybe eight or ten-foot corridor down to the water, but no place to turn around to back in. So it was just completely congested, there was no way that they could get that boat into the water. And they were frustrated. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this matter at hand? Okay. Sure if you'd. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak here?
Mr. Chair, I can go through the letters that we received then? So there was eight letters that, or emails I received, those were emailed to you yesterday, and hard copies have been provided, so I'll just summarize those. From Dave Schrifels, opposed to the request. His comments were, "Music can be heard across the lake, the township wants the CUP denied. The band shell was constructed without an opportunity for neighbors to comment, and a wider public notice should be given. Ten to fifteen events per year would disrupt every weekend in the summer. The music can be heard inside homes, and the planning commission should consider the likelihood of compliance with noise restrictions." Tim Edgerton with the DNR, had questions about the notice requirements, and then concerned with illegal parking at the public access, or mooring boats at the public access. Mark Donlin had concerns, hears the music across the lake and the noise is excessive. Joyce and Todd Brenney, support the request. Would make this a fun area, no outside music options on a lake in the area. Ross Voight supports it, outdoor music is a great amenity for the area. Shady's pays a lot in taxes and should be able to use their outdoor area. Julie Voight supports the request, family has a cabin on the lake and enjoys outdoor concerts. Brian Anstein, his comments included needing to limit the timeframe and days of the week for outdoor music. Need a better way to handle traffic around the boat launch, need to consider public safety. Brevor supports the request, has heard music in the past, but it hasn't been overly noisy or disturbing. Enjoy the opportunity to have music nearby for the summer months. And she was more concerned with the after-hours and intoxicated drivers. And that's all I received.
All right, thank you very much. With that, seeing no one else coming up for public comment, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
May I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion from Jason?
Second.
Second from David Bentroot. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Sign, motion carries, public hearing is closed. And now moving to our finding of facts. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance?
Mr. Chair, it is, I believe it is, consistent with the zoning ordinance. Number 439, Section 4.8, and 10.2.4A. This is a allowed condition.
Okay, we have information as a yes for question number one. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county?
Mr. Chair, I would cite that it does. Business goals, specifically item number four. Enhance the ability of local retail and commercial business to sustain small cities and rural town sites. Under, yeah, also under rural business policies. Item number four, rural businesses in agricultural areas must embrace the comprehensive plan, future land use factors to minimize conflicts between adjacent land uses and natural resources.
Okay. Set for number two. Number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood?
Mr. Chair, in this case, I do not believe that it is. There's, the township is coming up pretty hard on this one with regulations. A lot of neighbors, and you can argue these both ways, I live close to one. But clearly, it's an issue in this particular neighborhood.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I just want to comment about that, as following in to the last meeting, we didn't bring up the issue for rural tourism. And within that, it clearly states, it says that the hours operation should not have a negative impact on the neighboring properties. So obviously, there is a conflict with these neighboring properties. I don't think we can ignore that.
This wouldn't be under the rural tourism, though. That'd be in egg zoning?
Well, if it is in, if it's in a township, it would be.
It doesn't fall under rural tourism in the zoning ordinance, it's a commercial use in the shoreline. Pre-ordinance commercial use in the shoreline overlay district. So they're allowed expansions and allowed to operate with conditional use permits.
Okay, so for number three, it's a no, is that the general consensus of the board? Number four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, it's not the ordinance that's the issue, the ordinance allows it. And so, it's that sticky spot as a county. Totally fine, their request, absolutely no problem on the CUP. And we could put conditions in there that would have zero problem either. It comes down to us respecting township requests. And, I mean, if it's not an allowed condition in the township, again, then we can't really supersede that. It's the local level of government that makes that determination. And so, it's not the ordinance, it's the township that prevents it.
Okay, and then other issues pertinent to the matter, we had township input. There were also comments on public safety as well. But that's, you know, not as germane. So, looking at this, since we did have a no, I think we would be looking for a denial, correct?
Mr. Chair, conditional use permits don't work in the same way variances do. Which is where you were used to working, that was your past arena. So it is a decision of the planning commission to consider all of the findings of fact and make a recommendation to whichever way they want to hear this, and then present that recommendation to the county board.
All right, very good. I guess let's have at it, then.
So you'd be looking for a motion at this time?
Yep. Can I get a motion for approval of this variance request from Shady's? Looking for a motion for approval.
Or just a motion in general, and they can make whatever motion they want?
Any motion would be great.
I don't want to make this motion. I don't want to make the motion, I disagree with it from a county perspective, but at the same point, it's a township deal, and I have a hard time approving a CUP when the township doesn't allow it at all. And that, that's a sticky spot for me. I would prefer to have the township make that determination, but yet they have in not allowing it, period. So I guess I would have to recommend denial of the CUP on those grounds.
Can I ask a quick question, quick? So, am I, is it able to, so let's just say that you guys deny it. Do I have to come back and start this whole process over if I decided to try to do this again? Or is it going to be something that I'm going to work with the township on? Because I'd rather just go at one, work with one or the other and simplify it for everybody. I'm okay with going to the township later and getting all, going by their rules and how they want it to do it, but I have to meet with them in order to do that, so I'm kind of in an order here. And I don't want to go backtracking again. So if I have to go back to them and get two events a year, I'm okay with that, but I don't want to have to come back here and get approval again from you guys. So that's where I'm at, just to say.
Mr. Chair, it would be, if this is denied, this is what allows outdoor music at the county to allow outdoor music, so he would have to come back. If the township changes their rules or whatever that would allow it, he would then have to come back and ask for it again here, at the county level.
And the reality is, if it got worked out at the township level, I mean, I'm speaking, I'm one vote, but I'd approve in a heartbeat. But right now, it's a problem with all the local residences, so...
Excuse me, Chair.
No, go ahead.
Just looking at that, if you arrive at some kind of agreement with the township, we still have to have, it's a change in the CUP. So we have to do that at this level, that goes to the county board, so we have to go through the steps.
Mr. Chair, I just want to throw out one option before making a recommendation, is Mr. Schifler could request to table this again in order to have some time to talk to the township and maybe try to come to a compromise with the township. We can allow some time for that before you guys make a decision. He'll have to also sign a waiver to allow for the additional timeframe, but that's an option, too.
I am set up to go to the next township. I already let them know that I'm going to be there on the next one, just so you guys know, too.
Okay, so you're wishing to table?
To table it.
Okay, request table, do we need to make a motion on that, I assume?
So just Jason need to?
Do you want to pull dryer?
I'll withdraw my, my motion.
Okay, and then do we need to vote on tabling that, or is that just a?
A continuation.
Okay, continuation.
Yeah, do a motion to table.
Chair?
Yes.
Just for staffs. So then if it's tabled, what, how long does the table last? But what if there's no agreement between the?
Well, it stays on the table until somebody removes it from the table and requests it. So if there's no agreement, it's just going to sit in limbo. If Mr. Schifler, if Mr. Schifler comes back with something from the township and they agree to something, then we would be going through the process of re-notification, so everybody's aware of it. But I'm pretty sure we would be knowing. As Heidi indicated, we do need a waiver for the time period for the request to action as required by statute. So we would be requesting that waiver from Mr. Schifler for that purpose. And then whenever they come to some agreement, then it can come back to you and you guys can have a conversation.
Mr. Chair, Shelley, but is it, does that remain indefinite, or is it one year?
I don't believe we have a time, if it's an indefinite waiver, it's an indefinite waiver on our time period.
But on an application, isn't there a one-year maximum on an application?
I know we have, if it's an incomplete application. But that's not technically what this will be, so we'll have to look on that, because otherwise, you have one year, six months or one year if it's an incomplete application. But this hasn't been deemed an incomplete application, so we'd have to check if there would be, if it would expire at some time.
Mr. Chair, essentially, we'd be looking to make sure that they follow the state statute and then look at our ordinance, but I don't believe we have anything when something's on the table and tabled. You're, as a commission, I'm hearing pretty clearly that you want some township buy-in to something, whatever that would be, prior to coming back.
I have one question. It sounds like you're going to leave it on limbo for a long time, potentially, or maybe not. My question is just to keep it clean. If you, if we were to deny recommendation, and then they would come back, if they have to come back, then everybody has to be re-noticed, correct?
They're going to have to be re-noticed if we put it at table, either way.
Right, I was just wondering about the noticing. The noticing requirements.
Yeah, notice, tabling requires that, if we're just continuing it, then we don't re-notice, which last month we did, we continued. If we table it, we don't know when it'll be back, so then we re-notice.
All right, I was misunderstanding the two. I didn't know there was a difference between the two, so, yeah.
Mr. Chair, let's have clarification at next meeting on that, okay?
Okay, yeah, I just pulled up the ordinance, it says, "Incomplete applications shall expire after one year," so we can...
It's not.
It's not deemed incomplete, so...
So it would stay on a table until it would be removed?
Right.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, you've requested the tabling, and then we still have to approve that, correct? I mean, we make.
Yeah, we need a motion, yep.
Before we do that, I'll make a motion that we approve tabling, but I live close to a Shady's, and so I've been in your shoes, and I talked to all the neighbors that also were in your shoes in this situation two years ago. And I will tell you today that after the conditions were put in place at the Shady's in Cold Spring, the noise, we get noise off the lakehead all the time, there's bands all the time. But it's not from Shady's, it's private residences. So as you're looking at your township stuff, I think it's fair to be consistent from the general public to a business. Or otherwise, it's not a very business-friendly township either, and you're going to run into the downsides of that. So, it's just a tricky one, and I get it, it's sensitive, but it's good to work through it together. I can tell you the community did in that Cold Spring area, and it's gone very well working with Shady's on that. So hopefully, you guys can come up to a resolution and it'll work. So with that, I make a motion that we recommend tabling it.
We have a motion for tabling, can I get a second?
Chair, a second, though.
Second from Rich. All those in favor of tabling the variance request from Shady's, say aye.
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 And all those, same sign, motion carries. We will see you eventually.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving to agenda, item number four. To consider a rezoning request submitted by Dennis and Sherri Ruley of South Haven, Minnesota, according to Section 4.10 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439, to rezone approximately forty acres from the A80 zoning district to the A40 zoning district. And that is lying southeast of 177th Street and 38th Avenue in Section 15 of Fairhaven Township. If I can get your name and address for the public record, please.
Dennis Ruley, 1816, 338th Avenue, 5532.
Thank you very much, and staff, your report.
Okay, so rezoning forty acres from A80 to A40, and the purpose is to allow for a residential dwelling to be constructed on this forty-acre tract. It's on the corner of 177th Street and 38th Avenue. There is an easement access to that property existing, so they do have access. It consists of woodland and wetland. There's quite a bit of elevation change from the northeast, northwest corner down to the southeast corner. It's about a seventy-foot drop in elevation. No setback impacts with this request. There are approximately eighteen homes, four feedlots with greater than ten animal units, and one feedlot with less than ten animal units within a half-mile of the property. Surrounded by a mix of rural residential lots, farm sites, farmland, wetland, and woodland, and surrounded by agriculture eighty and agriculture forty zoning. The property's not within any overlay districts or areas of concern. For residential development options, this would allow one residential dwelling unit, where it's currently not allowed any. Future Land Use Map has this as an ag and rural area, along with the natural resources overlay. overlay. And Fairhaven Township recommended approval of the rezoning. That's it.
Okay, and then if I can get a roll call for who is able to visit the site. Dave Bentrud?
I did not.
Uh, Jason?
I did not.
Uh, Dave Canapla?
I did not.
I did. District five, Rich?
At large. Yes, I did.
Yes. Tara, at large?
I did not.
Okay, and then Commissioner Persky?
I did.
Okay, there's that for the record. So, since we've had our staff report, if you want to say anything, Dennis, feel free.
I really don't have, you know?
Okay.
I've been looking for a building title.
Sure.
I mean, that's, I think I went through the township and did all the processes instead of skipping the township.
Sure.
Or anything like that, so I don't know what.
Okay. Any questions from the commission panel at all?
No, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I was going to say this, pretty straightforward. I am, ob, can I get a motion to open the public hearing? I doubt if I'll hear anything.
You don't need a motion to open.
You just roll into it.
All right, anybody wishing to speak to this matter at all? Anyone wishing to speak to this matter?
I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving to our finding of facts right now. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance?
Mr. Chair, it is consistent with zoning ordinance 439, section 4.10.1.
Okay. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county?
Mr. Chair, I believe it does. It's actually under living goals in this case, which you don't have, providing viable means. I'm going off memory for people at different stages of life. However, I'm also going to comment on agricultural goal, which is retaining areas with highly-valued ag land or economically viable animal ag operations. This is all wooded, 40 acres right now anyway. It's not being used for ag production, so to me, it checks a couple boxes.
All right, number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood?
Mr. Chair, I believe it is just rezoning for potentially a different house being added.
Yes, and how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, I think they went and followed the process through the township, recommended applications.
Yeah, very good. Any other issues pertinent to this matter? Township approved. I think that's all that we have here. So, looking for a motion for this variance request from Mr. Ruley.
You want to beat me to it?
I was going to say, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning request to go from ag 80 to ag 40.
Okay, motion from Rich?
I'll second.
Second.
I like it, Dave.
Dave Canapla?
Getting on the record.
I like that. Very good. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of this variance request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries, and you will be up at the next commissioners' meeting.
Good luck with the property.
Thank you.
Look.
All right, cruising right along to item number five now. To consider a zoning request submitted by BMJ Properties of Belgrade, Minnesota according to section 4.10 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439 to rezone approximately 37.15 acres of A40 and commercial zoning districts to the industrial zoning district. This is properties part of the northwest quarter of, lying north of County Road 32 and east of State Highway 71 in section nine of Crow River Township, and the address is 24614 State Highway 71, Belgrade, Minnesota. So, if the applicant, Mr. Bruce, I believe, would come forward, please, and state your name and address for our public record, that would be fantastic.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Tom Bruce, Rice Companies, 1019 Industrial Drive South in Sauk Rapids, Minnesota, 56379.
Very good, thank you so much. And staff, to your report, please.
All right, so request to rezone 37.15 acres from, some of it's agriculture 40, some of it's commercial, and rezone it to industrial. And that is for the purpose of expanding the Bayer Built Woodworks business out here. So, it has existing access to Highway 71 and County Road 32. No setback impacts with the request. There are four homes and one animal feedlot within a half mile of the property. Property is surrounded by agriculture 40 zoning. It's not within any overlay districts or areas of concern. No change to residential development options here. It's within the ag rural area in the comprehensive plan. The land evaluation site assessment score was 73.65, and Crow River Township recommended approval of the rezoning.
All right, and for site visits, I'll take the role in that. Dave Bentrud?
I drive by that often. I personally would.
Uh, Jason?
Echo that one.
Uh, Dave Canapla?
No, I did not.
Hi, for district five, did. Rich Blankish, at large?
Yes, I did.
And Tara Ostendorf, at large?
Not for this meeting, but I drive by it all the time.
Yeah, and Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, I was there.
Thank you. All right, applicant, do you have anything you want to say to us?
Yeah, I just, thanks for having, having us on behalf of Bayer Built or BMJ. We were hired last fall primarily just for master planning of the site, which hasn't been done there, you know, I think in a long time. And the primary concern there was just future planning of expansions and what they do in the future. And with regards to stormwater was a big piece of it. So, that north, north line that's kind of added is, there's an existing pond there. We did, we did hire a lot of civil work to be done, just in lieu of getting the zoning done. And then we met with Jennifer ahead of time. I can't remember, staff probably remembers, but there was that little commercial piece on 71, and she said I'd like to just pick that off at the same time to clean that up. So, we, we did send our plan. When the lease is scored, that's why the acreage is off a little bit, because that little tiny commercial piece was, wasn't involved in that when we submitted to Jennifer originally. So, really, the intent of this is just so we can continue planning. There's nothing solid yet, but get set up to make sure we can expand, have roads. The stormwater master planning is done, and we're ready to go.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the planning commission?
Mr. Chair, and I, I mean, we're just doing the zoning right now.
Correct.
And I, I was just wondering if you're going to have any more access than off the county road?
Uh, no, there's one. In fact, I drove back through that whole site, and there's that, the one access that's blocked off up on the northwest corner. You can see the road up there. And there is, there is an access off 71, but the, I'm not sure, I can't remember what road that is to the south, but there's a few access points down there. And I think, I think there's actually one farther to the east also. You know what, to be honest, Commissioner Persky, I just, I went in, you know, to the office there in the front, and, um, I mean, you can see, this is, this is very typical in my career, just, you know, a business expanding and adding and...
Well, I mean, we see, we've seen it grown over the years, you know? And it's just like you're adding onto the house, one piece and then the next piece and the next piece.
Yes, yes.
So, and I'll tell you, I'm very pleased to see that business being prosperous out there, so it's a good thing for the county.
Yeah. Impressive, yeah. We hadn't, we had not worked with them before, and impressive place.
Yeah. So, okay, well, it'll, when, when they decide what they're going to do, they'll come in with a plan.
Correct.
But I was just concerned about what, what the access might be off the county road on, to the south, so.
All right.
Or maybe that's a township road, I don't recall.
It is a county road, yeah.
Um, anyone else?
No.
All right, opening the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now, moving to our findings of fact. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance?
Mr. Chair, it is consistent with zoning ordinance. Sorry, got to find it back. 439...
Section 410.
Thank you, section 410. Is there anything else I'm missing on that, since I still haven't found it? Rich?
Nope.
Okay, good, thank you, Rich.
Perfect. All right, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county?
Mr. Chair, it does. Boy, I'm finding this spot. I'm going to go off memory again, under business goals. Oh, there it is, right up in front of me here. If I could read that, make the county a... Thank you. Rural businesses should not alter the rural character of the neighborhood. That one certainly applies. It's not my favorite, though. I just, I'm going to go with the one, so thank you, that's my favorite. Increase county's regional prosperity by being globally competitive in a business-friendly region, and that really applies to this business specifically. We look at lease scores on ag property, but the lease score, I don't care if it was 100 on this property, the significance of this, this business in this region is impactful, so, no-brainer on the business goal side.
Perfect. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood?
Mr. Chair, I would say it is. There hasn't been any documented complaints about the current business that operates there, so.
Absolutely, all right, number four. How has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, they're being proactive in the rezoning of this in preparation for future expansion and dealing with some of the water drainage issues and being sensitive of those things, so, doing all the right stuff.
Perfect, and were there other issues pertinent to this matter? I don't think there were at all.
Not at this point.
Okay, then looking for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, we recommend approval.
And I will second that.
Motion from Jason, second from Rich for approval for the variance for, yep, changing the rezoning from ag 40 and commercial district to industrial. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. See you again.
Yes, absolutely.
Tell Melissa she needs to show up next time. Tell Melissa Byer she needs to show up next time and present her case.
You're right.
I think there were some basketball games today. Or hockey, yeah.
Yes.
Probably hockey.
All right, last but not least, our friends from the city of Painesville. To consider a rezoning request by the city of Painesville, obviously Painesville, Minnesota according to section 4.10 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439 to rezone approximately 9.4 acres from the transitional 20 zoning district to the commercial zoning district. And the property is in part of the northeast quarter, lying west of County Road 33 in section nine of Painesville Township, and the property address is 1 point, or 18799 County Road 33 in Painesville, Minnesota. And if you two gentlemen, if I can get your names and address for the public record, please.
Oh, yeah, Tara Calrify, city administrator, city of Painesville.
Chuck Wolf, city engineer for city of Painesville.
Very good, thank you. And staff, to your report.
Okay, so rezoning 9.4 acres from T20 to commercial. The purpose of this is, they are wanting to split this lot into two lots and have wastewater treatment plant on both lots. The ordinance states if you have these smaller lot sizes, it falls under residential zoning. So, in order to be able to have wastewater treatment plants on both commercial zoning districts required. Access is from County Road 33 and is existing. There is a wastewater treatment facility already on the property. No setback impacts with the request. There's no homes or feedlots within a half a mile. The city of Painesville wastewater treatment ponds, Highway 23, some solar farms, and a substation are all within a half mile of the property. Surrounding zoning is transition 20 and urban expansion. There is a small area of MAP native plant community on the property. No residential development options with this rezoning request. It's within a transitional area in the future land use map of the county's comprehensive plan, and Painesville Township recommended approval of the rezoning.
All right, and roll of those who are able to visit. District two, David Bentrud?
I did not.
Uh, district three, Jason?
I know the property well.
District four, Mr. Canapla?
I did not.
I did. District five, at large, Rich?
I did.
And at large, Tara?
I did not, but I know this property pretty well.
And Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
Very good. All right, applicants, to your request, anything you want to say, or, go ahead.
Sure, just, as mentioned, it's a little bit of a unique situation. The, the site is planned to continue to be used for wastewater treatment purposes. We just have a local industry in town that is going to add a pre-treatment component to our facility. So, in order to do that, they need to, they need to own a chunk of that land, so really, that's, that's the gist of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the commissioners?
No.
I think it's pretty straightforward, but...
I just, I was out there and took a look at that. That's interesting facility, and it was, as cold as it was, I was surprised to see how that water was still moving, because it was, you know, teens below zero, but that water was still moving. And then also, you have all that diking around there. Is that so that it will then go to the ponds as far as drainage then, so that it just runs downhill? I mean, it's gravity fed, is that how that works?
Yeah, that, on the west side of the road, that's a fairly deep, it's a high-intensity irrigation basin, so as the wastewater's treated there, it goes across the street into the stabilization ponds, which eventually gets irrigated on farmland north of...
Okay, and is that all, then that's all gravity fed?
It is gravity fed from the pond on the west side to the east side, yes.
Any, any comments or questions from the board for the applicants? Hearing seeing none, anyone wishing to speak to the item at hand? Anyone wishing to speak to the item at hand? Anyone wishing to speak at the item at hand? Hearing none, looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
Nick, you don't want on this one? I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
You got it? You got it? Okay, I'll second. Rich's motion, second by me.
From Jason, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. And now, moving to our finding of facts. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance?
Mr. Chair, it is in accordance with zoning ordinance 439, section 4.10.
All right, very good. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county?
Mr. Chair, I would say it does. Under connectivity goals, item number two, coordinate infrastructure and service needs with development and encourage development where the infrastructure and services are adequate to serve that growth.
Thank you very much.
I would add, I think it's still good that we keep getting rid of these transition zoning areas that don't really apply anymore.
Hmm. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood?
That's, not, not...
Yes, correct.
Yes, it is. Not a lot of changes.
Yeah, and how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied? More of a formality, I think, of buying this property. I mean, honestly, nothing really changes, so...
Yeah, yeah, they're going through the process.
Exactly. And then, other issues pertinent, the township had that approval, so I think that's really all we are dealing with. So, then I would be looking for a motion for this matter at hand.
I make a motion to approve the rezoning request.
All right, motion from Tara?
And I will second that.
Second from Rich. All those in favor of approving the variance request from the city of Painesville for the rezoning of this district to Commercial from Transitional. So, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Very good, and the commissioners will see you at their next meeting.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, and let's see here, we have our minutes to look at. You should have a copy or have received a copy of that. Anything outstanding that needs to be corrected or anything? Otherwise, if I can get a motion, that'd be great.
I will make a motion, we approved last month's minutes.
Motion from Rich.
Second.
Second from Dave Bentreud. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And Nick, to you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, we have a few proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance in front of you. I'll just kind of go through those and kind of hit some of the main points from some of the amendment language there, proposed amendments. We'll start with stormwater. Essentially, we had a couple of goals here from feedback from stormwater designers and engineers and the public, and one of the goals was to become just more consistent with the state NPDS permit and other LGUs in terms of stormwater. And then, another goal was to improve administration of stormwater requirements, not just, you know, improving administration from our side in terms of a time, staff standpoint, but also from the standpoint of the engineers submitting the plans, and then in turn, the turnaround time for the public as well. So, to meet these goals, we kind of looked, we did a couple of things. We moved from a defined rate and volume standard to a water quality standard, and utilized standards that were found within the Minnesota Stormwater Manual and the state NPDS permit. So, just kind of going through this here, the applicability stays largely the same. The general standards, that's seven twenty-six-two, one of the amendments there is redevelopment of impervious already covered by existing stormwater plans, would not need a new plan. It would just need to be verified that it is functioning, and that would be done by an engineer. So, kind of more focus on kind of function in that regard. And the next section there, in the content of the SWIP, it aligns better with the content required in the state NPDS permit. The state NPDS permit's required any time that there's an acre or more of development or of disturbance, or if it's a part of a common plan of development that's more than that, that is kind of outlined in the applicability here under letter A. And then the other letters under applicability are items that wouldn't necessarily fall under the state permit, but would be items that we're already looking at or would be looking at for stormwater requirements. Just a few other items of note here. So, essentially, we'd be utilizing one inch of stormwater, essentially be looking at treating one inch of stormwater across areas of development. So, that's in our standards, rather than utilizing... This would be a change, because we'd no longer utilize different models and use like, looking at slopes and the soil types, it gets pretty complicated to calculate that, and we had that standard, and that was different than the state standard for those stormwater permit requirements, so that got very complicated when both of those were in play. So, this aligns much better with the state permit. For maintenance, operation and maintenance is required to be shown in the plans, so that's shown right from the beginning when we review that and see that. And the financial guarantee and compliance are largely the same as what the standards are now. The other item here, the main item was the bluff definition. So, we had a number of issues with this, mostly, we had surveyors provide feedback about some of the conflicts in terms of the language from the state definition in regards to the top of the bluff definition and where that's found. And again, here, we had, it was just more complicated, we wanted to make this a little bit more streamlined where it didn't take a lot of staff time, but we still got to the point where we were protecting the resources in the way that they should be. So, essentially, here, we simplified it by utilizing a single length of transects, fifty-foot transects, and we're essentially looking at, in those fifty-foot transects, we need a thirty percent slope or greater on one of those transects, and then eighteen percent or more slope across fifty-foot transects that are intersecting with that, with that area. Lot of the other standards, like the slope must drain towards the water body, and the slope must rise at least twenty-five feet above the ordinary water level of a water body, those are pretty much the same. And then our toe-on-top of bluff definitions are just clarified to match that as well. There are some diagrams in there, just for reference, that can be utilized, it kind of highlights how that's found.
So, real quick, just because that comes up a lot. So, with that fifty-foot, so you're measuring the slope percentage over fifty feet from different transects to see if each of those meets, and at what point, at what point does it start, though? Like, what's your setback? What's the starting point from that?
Sure. It might just be helpful if I just kind of run through how...
That'd be perfect, yeah.
So, say we have a caller that calls in, and they wanted to know, you know, do we have bluff or potentially have bluff on our property? So, we'd first look at kind of the number one there, are we in a shoreline area and within four times the setback of a water body? That's, you know, pretty easy to find, yes or no. If yes, then we move on. Does the slope rise at least twenty-five feet above the ordinary water level of the water body? Yes or no? If it's yes, we move on. And then, the next thing we would look at is, do we have a fifty-foot horizontal transect that rises more than fifteen feet, essentially, to give us a thirty percent slope or greater? So, if we find a transect that's fifty feet, that's more than fifteen feet in elevation change, then we know we've got that. Okay, now we probably got bluff, so now we have bluff. Now, we're going to find, you know, a lot of times, we don't necessarily need to find where the toe is right off the bat, just because that's usually protected by the structure setback. And then, to find the top of the bluff, we continue those transects until we're fifty feet and have eighteen percent or less slope.
Okay. Mr. Chair, do you think then this is just clarification? Do you think it's more restrictive, less restrictive, or what do you think?
Sure. So, and we've run through a number of examples of this of past bluff determinations. The vast majority of the time, it's going to be very similar or slightly more restrictive. However, there are some examples where it's going to be a little bit less restrictive, but the revision in the top of the bluff definition kind of catches that, though. Essentially, when you're, from the past definition, we had to look at the whole slope percentage as well as the transect percentage, and that gets very difficult to calculate and find because you're running multiple transects on multiple positions at multiple angles of the same slope, and it took, takes a long, you know, amount of time to...
A lot more subjectivity, I'm guessing, in that, too, which is tough to, it just causes conflict.
So, this is a lot easier to, you know, to understand, but then also to administer as well.
And then, there's no change as far as disturbing of the bluff, as far as language in this?
Nope, no, it doesn't. I mean, the bluff, you know, the prohibitions from disturbance in the bluff are still the same. Part of this also is in response to construction that would get pushed right to the edge of the bluff setback, and, you know, our ordinance allows disturbance within twenty feet of a constructed structure under a permit, and that would encroach into some of these areas. But with this clarification of the top of the bluff, it helps protect those areas at the top of the slope from eroding down the hill, you know, towards a lake or river, so... So, it's, in that regard, it actually protects the resource better in this way. And with the stormwater, we did send this out to all of the engineers that have done stormwater plans in the county, and then we did send out these proposed changes to all of the surveyors as well. So, they're all aware of that, and then, you know, we'll get more testimony, you know, in the future here possibly for a public hearing as well.
Perfect.
Very good.
Thank you.
I like more clearly defined items. Those are always good, and the consistency. I appreciate the spirit of why this is being done.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and then there were a few definition changes that were just somewhat minor to just kind of clarify, and, I mean, not too substantive of changes here, just kind of clarifying definitions. We kind of went through these, and again, this is kind of from feedback and that we've received, but also from what we've worked through in the last number of years to clean this up, so...
What are the, what are the next steps with that ordinance provision?
Public hearing. Yep, there'll be a public hearing at the county board in March, I believe. March eleventh. So, they'll hold the actual hearing for the ordinance amendment, and then if that's approved, then it'll be enacted a couple of weeks after that, usually once it's published in the paper. Ready to roll when construction season gets busy.
Perfect. Thank you, Nick, appreciate it.
Thanks, Nick.
Yeah.
Any questions or concerns? I was hoping, Tara, I'd get a little feedback from you on that.
I did have stuff written down, and then Nick said, oh, they sent it all to engineers, and I'm like, oh, they don't make the SWIPs. But my one question on this was, there's language in here that states, I think it's on the general standards, on seven point two six point two B, whatever. Which one was it? Two six two, yeah. B. I think it's up there a little bit. Seven point two, twenty-six point two. Keep going up. Oh, there's two. Yeah, point two. Not bad. Point two B. So, I had a couple, yeah, so I had a couple of questions on this one, so related to the BMPs. This statement basically says comply with the manufacturer's specs and be in accordance with the Minnesota Stormwater Manual. Sometimes when we put stuff in there, like be in accordance with the Minnesota Stormwater Manual, that's just a guidance document. There's nothing like tying anything that's in there to specs or anything like that. So, sometimes I have a hard time with that one when you're trying to design SWIPs, because there's a whole bunch of information in there. And that one, I understand, like, utilizing the guidance in the Minnesota Stormwater Manual...
Consistent with?
Yes, that would be better than saying in accordance, because I feel like then we're always trying to figure out...
That's why, that's why I'm asking, because I know you work with stuff like this, and that's why I thought if you had a better word, maybe that's what we need.
It's a good suggestion, yep.
And the other one I had was related to, there's a paragraph in here talking about signing off from a PE, but it's kind of conflicting, because you could also be a SWIP-certified personnel and not have a PE. So, there was a paragraph in there that I read that it just seemed conflicting.
Nick, any ideas?
Yep, so that was likely under the section where, that might have been in seven twenty-six two as well.
I can't, I don't, I don't know where I put that comment.
Maybe seven twenty-six three, where all required plans shall be drawn to an easily legible scale, should be clearly labeled, and shall be signed by...
A licensed professional.
A licensed professional engineer, is that the...
So, the plans themselves, yes, design plans, but not necessarily the SWIP.
Okay, I see what you're saying there.
Okay. Because you can be SWIP-certified, and you don't have to be a PE to do that. And most people aren't.
That's a good point.
And the other one I had was related to number four under that, same one.
Are you finding it, Nick?
Existing proposed impervious surface areas. Yeah, it's, that one's under seven point twenty-six point three, and then item number four under that one. And the only thing I had under that was, when you're putting your site map together, site map shall be submitted and include, and then item number four is existing and proposed impervious surface areas. Did you want that to include the exact amounts of those, or just drawn out?
Which section are you in?
This one here.
Seven point twenty-six point three.
Seven twenty-six three B four.
Four. Yep.
And it's talking about the existing or proposed impervious.
Yeah, so you could just get blocks on the map.
Yeah.
Shown as a map or quantified?
Quantified, I think, would be better, because then you'd have a chart or a table somewhere in your SWIP that says... I mean, typically, we do that anyway. We would put it in a table and say, this is your acres of impervious, and this is your acres of non-impervious, but maybe just say that that's what you want.
Right, because on that, it's, in that section, it is shown on the map, not in a Yeah, I mean, it could be...
Yeah, I see what you're saying. That was just a quick note that I had. I don't think you list anywhere the same, the actual dimensions.
Well, yeah, because later on, it's, you know, in seven twenty-six four, where we, for those standards, we outline for each applicable, depending on what the applicability is, we're, you're essentially multiplying that one inch across that surface area to get your volume.
Yep.
And that's oftentimes shown in the charts, so that...
Yeah. That works. Whatever's easiest for you.
Thank you.
I didn't see anything else, really, other than, I mean, it looks like a lot of the language follows the current construction permit.
Yeah.
And I didn't know, so, when we're doing some of our ordinance reviews, sometimes we will decide if there's enough language in there that you would just cite those sections of the current permit, and like, basically incorporate the language, rather than, you know, rewrite it, but I guess that's up to you guys for how many times you want to go back and redo the ordinance.
We, right, we did, we did talk about that. Rob and I worked on this together, and we each had different opinions on how much we should cite that and kind of just directly reference that permit, the state permit. There are, it's not, the reason why we did it this way is we could kind of outline for each, you know, area of applicability, where it might differ a little bit from the state permit, so then it made it easier that way, but yeah, it...
Yeah, I'm just trying to make it easier for SWIP designers.
No, for sure, absolutely, yeah.
Because anytime we look at these, we're like, ah, I gotta like, cross-reference everything, but that's fine. It's clear both ways, it's just what's easiest.
Yeah, it gets a little bit trickier, because when we're in a situation where maybe we're doing redevelopment in a resort or something, where it's a smaller scale, not everything's going to be directly applicable, like it would be on a large site, it's a large subdivision or something like that.
Those are the only ones I had.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Tara, I appreciate your expertise in scrutinizing that.
Yeah, likewise.
Yeah.
That was good.
All right.
For bringing it.
Anything else for the good of the order, acts for rebellion or subdiction? Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I do have one thing to bring up, because I think I would be remiss if I didn't talk about it, and that's relating to the Sunny Mary Meadows issue that we had last time. I don't know if you folks are aware, we had quite a bit of fireworks at the board level concerning that. And I think we've got to be careful, and we did, I think, a better job with Shadys today. But something that took place there is the applicant came in with a proposal for a flower shop, and then we closed the public hearing, and then we started talking about music. The township had no idea what she wanted to do with music, and the residents didn't have any idea what she was gonna do with music. She had no rough draft about what she wanted to do with music, but in the end, we granted her outdoor music from six AM to eight PM, and then we gave her fifteen days where she could go till ten PM. Basically, she could have a concert venue there.
My, like, in reviewing that and listening to all the feedback that I heard about it afterwards, I don't, I feel like maybe that discussion got brought up, she didn't bring it up. We forced her to act in a certain way, and asked a lot of questions, and kind of went that way of making suggestions. And I do think that that was something that Commissioner Persky, you had started that line of questioning, and I feel like maybe we went down that rabbit hole, because it keeps on coming back to that milk and cider, or milk and honey, or whatever. But I do think that when the township official was here saying all of the things that the county could do to improve its ordinance, that that should be taken under consideration, because it's not gonna change.
And I'd like to make a comment also, and this is an afterthought, and that is, I do not like being put on the spot up here... do not like being put on the spot up here designing a business plan for an individual. We should just react on what is requested, and that's it. We shouldn't ask a ton of questions going down over here, they haven't asked about that. So I think from this time forward, it would be wise on our part not to get involved in the business plan for individuals that are sitting over there making the requests.
And I agree with you, because we basically put that plan together for her.
Again, I mean, she's not the only one. I've been on here, this is my eighth year, and I look back on what we've done in the past eight years. There have been times where we've had to hammer out some details for the business plan, and that should not be us doing that.
I agree with you, Rich. The only challenge I'd say to that is sometimes.
I'm ready for a challenge tonight.
No, no, it's good. No, I'm just saying, like, you're looking, and when you're doing a business and you're doing a business plan, there are a million things that you're looking at, and you have this vision, but you don't maybe have everything articulated out when it comes to something like music. But then all of a sudden, when your CUP is going to have language in there that's going to potentially limit your business plan, all of a sudden, you're like stuck on the spot. And they're in the same, you know, position we are, where all of a sudden, now there's a condition that might impact their business that they have to agree to on the spot, and we're like, 8:00 AM or 9:00 PM, or, you know, that's hard, too.
Mr. Chair, but you should, you should have that figured out before you come in here, but the other thing is, then you come in for an amendment, okay? You come in and you amend, because if, for example, also, the number of people on that property, okay, she could have a concert with 999 people out there. And think of you being one of those neighbors, and think about the potential for that to take place. We gave her 15 times. Think about from Memorial Day to Labor Day, every Friday night and every Saturday night. Now, she might not do that, but that CUP is on that property.
True, I agree with you.
Shelley?
Mr. Chair, I think it's really important to understand that we allow temporary use special events as a provisional use within the zoning districts that exist currently. So any person can come in, in an agricultural district and ask for, not come to this body, walk into our office and get a provisional use for that issue. They can do an amusement venue, they can do a lot of things. If you do not want that, then we have to change the ordinance. Talk about rural business, if we want to talk about any of these things. I'm telling you, we asked and answered this question before when we talked about rural tourism, and we talked about rural business with the comprehensive plan, and there were people here that talked about it. They wanted agricultural opportunities. What should we allow in agricultural areas for people to expand their businesses and do things? We, all as staff, said gray area, gray area, be aware, be aware, right? Flashing red lights, signs, and I heard this commission come out loud and clear, one at a time, yep, we understand it'll be gray, yep, we understand it'll be messy. Those words came out. I'm telling you, this is not simple, but it's really important. If you don't like something, please come back and say, we need to, let's put a hold on it, let's take a look at it, let's revise it, because if we don't, you're going to have messy every time. Because I agree with you, she came in with an application, she didn't modify her application. She came in, it said there was music on there, you know, but I don't think she was thinking anything else but having somebody play while people are picking flowers or it's a small event. That, that's how she presented it, I believe that to be the case, I have nothing to say otherwise. I think if you don't like a messy standard, then we have to address the messy standards, and we have to look at it and put more conditions on it. We knew rural tourism was going to be messy, we all knew that.
You know, I agree, but even to your.
Mr. Chair, I just want to go back, but Shelley, talking about having those 15 events, you cannot come in with an application and ask for 15 events. It's one at a time, is it not?
No.
I thought, I thought the application says it's one at a time.
Temporary use special event just limits it to up to 15 days per year. So that's how, like, some of these, like, pumpkin patches that operate in the fall, like, that kind of thing, you know, they just get, they have, it's just a blanket, you get 15 days to operate that or do that thing.
What would stop Shadys from doing that?
The Township Noise Ordinance would stop that.
The Township Noise Ordinance is a strong limiter here in that particular case.
Right. That's more restrictive than anything else.
Is the, is the county board opposed to changing their ordinance to clarify these things?
From what we're seeing, when you've got people that can't, you know, sit inside their house and watch television because the music's too loud, that's an issue. But by the same token, when you've got people that police it and keep it within the limits where it should be, it's not an issue.
Yeah. Well, and I brought this comment up, too, and it happens a lot on the water. People have bands, they have speakers playing, they go by in their boats with like crazy, I mean, there's always noise stuff going on, and sometimes my concern is we hold businesses to this, like, standard up here that they have to manage noise at, when any citizen is operating off the radar, and they're usually the more abusive of that, if I'm looking at just the sheer quantity of cases I personally see.
But I guess we have to decide, too, should a township be able to have an ordinance like Avon Township and saying, we want to preserve the peace and quiet, or else bring the standard down to lower levels?
They can do whatever they want.
They're allowed by right to do that statutorily.
And so, you know, I do think we're going to move forward with taking a look at this, because I don't think the situation's going to die, just like we did with vacation home rentals, just like we did with, I think, the access on the Mississippi River for that one boat landing. I think it's going to come back, and I think we're going to see maybe some of the townships asking for, to be maybe perhaps a little more protective of their rural setting.
Well, and that's cool. They can do that.
Yeah, they can do that. That's lower levels of government, they can do what they want. But I think, I think if the county's going to consider an ordinance to clear this up and clean it up, they should do that. But then keep in mind that the county plan does try to hold up ag tourism or ag businesses. And if a business needs to diversify, to become more sustainable and maintain that real character, you can't, on the one hand, come in here and say, we want our ag environment to stay the exact same, and then have the farmer come in and say, I want to do a ag business, and then the same people say, no, you can't, that's, you can't do that, you can't talk on both sides.
Tara, but having rock concerts every weekend, is that an ag business? Because, again, one of the standards is.
I'm not saying that you should have a rock concert, I'm saying the county should clean up their ordinance.
Yeah, because, and application, because it's, again, the hours of operation should not have a negative impact on the neighboring properties. And if I was to be wanting to go to bed at 9:30 or so, and I've got all that music player, and again, there's those that do it well, soft music's not an issue, but, you know, when you're playing "Born to Be Wild" and "Dirty Deeds."
I just don't want, I just don't want every CUP to come in here and sound like the plot of Footloose, like, let's just clean up the ordinance. That's what it sounds like.
Asked in the production of Footloose one time.
I live five, a five-mile drive from here. In my backyard during the summertime, when the ledge has some of their bounce, it goes all the way across the city.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
But you know what? You could be 200 yards from it, and if the wind is blowing from the north, you won't hear anything.
Oh, but that.
Well, it's loud, I guarantee it, calm, yep.
And the same, you know, same thing with Lake George, summer time by George.
Yeah.
Careful talking loud in a boat in evening hours, by the way, if you don't want the neighbors to hear. Yep.
It's hard, it's hard to control acoustics across the body of water.
There's a lot of variables.
It's hard. I can hear my neighbors talking, like, it freaks me out sometimes, because if the wind's just right or the atmosphere's just right, I can hear them talking like they're next to me.
It makes me wonder, Lake County, Minnesota, I don't know how we got, I'll end this real quick, but we had a camp up in, on Lake McDougall, up in way northern Minnesota, and my grandma had purchased a former emergency siren for lunch, breakfast, dinner, and supper. Nobody complained, and if they did, we didn't care. But Lake County, I think they're just whatever, so, you know.
Lake County, they don't have permits.
Yeah, they don't have permits, they don't believe in them. All right, yes, please, you want to make a motion for that, Rich? Rich motions to adjourn. Second from Dave Bentreud. We are adjourned.